Good evening, Milpitas. I'm your 2022 Board President, Kelly Yip Chuan. Welcome to this meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for opening meetings. Public comments can be made while you are logged into Zoom or if you are in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Would I call the meeting to order? Scott, can you please do the roll call, please?
Certainly, President Yip Chuan. Board Member Tsai.
Here.
Board Member Lee An. Board Member Lee An is not here. Board Clerk No. Board Clerk No informed us that he is in transit and in traffic and should be here shortly. Board Vice President Norwood.
Here.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Here.
We have a quorum with three members.
Okay, and I got a text message from Clerk No that he's also in transit. Did I say that? Oh, I'm sorry. And then also trustee Lee An is waiting to be let in? Oh, she lost it, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, and our student board reps will join us later for opening sessions. Okay. Review and approve the closed session agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the closed session agenda.
So we have a motion and we have a second by Clerk No. Scott, would you mind doing the roll call?
Certainly, President Yip Chuan. Board Member Tsai.
Aye.
Board Member Lee An is absent. Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Board, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we are...
Are there any comments from the public at this part, Kelly?
Yes, yes. So before we go into closed sessions, are there any public comments?
Let me check if we have any hands raised. We do not. There are no public comments virtually at this time.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are adjourned to closed session.
Good evening, terracita. The public session starts at seven. So you could just turn off your video and then do whatever until seven. Just so you know.
Hello, is my audio coming through?
Good evening, Milpitas. I'm your 2022 Board President Kelly Yip Chuan. Welcome to this meeting of the Milpitas Unified District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which aligns with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for opening meetings. On April 26, 2022, the board extended AB 361 in accordance with Executive Order N-122. Tune into our hybrid-style board meetings online, either on Zoom or YouTube or in person in our boardroom. Public comments can be made while you are logged on into Zoom or if you are in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see the instructions for public comments on your screen. Our communications specialists will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, please go to the podium when you are called on. Instructions for both are also listed in each agenda. There are copies available at the back table. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communications specialists will take it from here.
Thank you so much, President Yip Chuan. As you see on your screen, if you are logged on to Zoom, you'll be able to make a comment virtually. You will see a hand icon by your name to indicate your request to make a public comment. We will call the names in the order they are received. Once your name is called, we will enable your audio. You will then take yourself off mute, and you will have two minutes to make your public comment. We do ask that you please be patient. The board president will call on any public comment at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act Government Code 54954.2A and Point 3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no response is required from the board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that the Brown Act Government Code Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We do have special accommodations for our board meetings. If you do need assistance in special accommodations, please contact the superintendent's office at least two business days in advance, and we'll see what we could do. Our meetings are broadcast live, both on Zoom and YouTube, and are recorded. All recordings are posted on the district website at www.musd.org. Closed captioning is available. If you are using the Zoom function, you'll click the closed captioning icon, and then a live transcription will appear on your screen. Lastly, if there are any additional documents that were not part of the agenda, those are available to the public as well. Back to you, President Yip Chuan.
Thank you very much, Scott. In closed session, the board voted four to one to terminate a classified employee in the position of Staff Secretary. The effective date will be May 10, 2022, and was approved by the following votes. President Kelly Yip Chuan, yes. Vice President Chris Norwood, yes. Clerk Minno, yes. Trustee Han Lin, yes. And trustee Michael Tsai abstained. No action was taken on Item B. And on Item C, the trustee voted unanimously to accept the superintendent's recommendation for principal position at Curtner Elementary School. And that will be mentioned in the report later on. And for Item D, no action was taken on that item. Okay, now we're going to move on to Item 8, review and approve the open session agenda. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Scott, could you do roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Board Member Tsai.
Aye.
Board Member Liang.
Yes.
Board Clerk Liu.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood. I'm not hearing. Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes four oh.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Number Nine, Flag Salute. May we have the Milpitas High School in JROTC come up and help us do the flag, please? Please state your name.
Hello. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet Nguyen Nguyen. Accompanied with me today is Cadet Valencia Adrian, and we're from the Milpitas High School in JROTC. Please rise, remove your caps, and join with me in the flag salute. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our republic which is stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You now may be seated. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service. Are there any comments from the public? Let's go with virtual first. Okay, seeing a hand up there.
Yeah, we do have one hand raised. Nancy Franzino. Nancy, we are gonna enable your audio. Please take yourself off of, or please unmute yourself, and you have two minutes on the clock. Go right ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Nancy Franzino. I am part of the Milpitas community for about 20 years now. I have two young boys in MUSD for the past three years. My youngest one is at Rose Elementary, and I am here to just discuss really my frustration that I have been experiencing since the beginning of the school year with the special ed department, especially the program coordinator with Sharavi and Mary Jude not following through and updating our situation where our son has a hard-of-hearing disability. And we have been asking since September of this year to get the proper headphones to be fitted for him so he can do his eye-ready and his state testing accurately and at the right, with the right scores. Right now, he is taking his test audio only without the proper headphones. We have been told by the vice principal that at one point, at the beginning of the school year, we should just buy our own because he can then carry them with him to the following school years. My frustration is that no one, everyone keeps dropping the ball and passing the buck, and no one is taking any responsibility for a simple request that I am just so frustrated with the special ed that I just don't know how other parents are doing it, but I work two jobs, I don't have the time and patience to keep emailing. There's been about between 15 and 20 emails between the district, between the vice principal, and now the county of education, and we're not getting anywhere. We have two weeks left of school, three weeks of school, and we're still nowhere with no headphones. So that's all I have to say about that, and hopefully we...
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
Before we get the superintendent, can you ensure that the superintendent looks into that? Thank you.
Thank you, trustee now.
Okay, we do have one more comment. Marissa Trevino has her hand raised. You've been, your audio is enabled. Go right ahead, Marissa.
Thank you, MUSD Board and also community. I am Marisa Trevino, and I am the speech therapist currently at Curtner Elementary. And as we introduce the new principal that we finally get for next year, I would like to personally thank our interim principal, Raquel Kusunoki, for the leadership and the support that she has given the Curtner staff, teachers, and specialists this year. Because of her, we have strived through difficult times. Because of her leadership and her unwavering support, we have made it through a very difficult year, not just for our families, but for the staff and our students. And I would personally like to thank Ms. Kusunoki for her leadership, and that without her, we would have floundered halfway through the year as our assistant principal had to go on medical leave. Mrs. Kusunoki has taken on the interim principal role while still continuing her district office role and also taking the responsibility of an AP. Our staff has stayed strong because of her, and I know that because of her leadership, we have survived this crazy year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep, teamwork makes the dream work, and that's how we do it in Milpitas here. Do we have any more public comments?
That is it for our virtual public comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Moving on to Item 11, MUSD 2018, 2020, 2021 strategic goals. Build a culture of we that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers. Focus services and support system to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. Okay, moving on to Item 12, Superintendent's Report. And the superintendent is currently at another meeting, so we have our executive team here. He's gonna go over the recognitions for us.
Good evening. We have several recognitions this evening. I'm going to do the first few and then turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Zhang for the remaining two. So this evening, we have a group of young ladies in the background, and I can see them. And we're here tonight to honor the Thomas Russell Middle School Girls Volleyball Team for being exemplary student athletes and completing a stellar season. They won their divisional championship, and I know as athletes or student athletes, And I know as athletes or student athletes, I should say, being a part of a team brings a lot of new skills for you that you'll use later in life, learning how to balance doing school, learning how to balance learning a new skill set, working together as a team are all skills that you're gonna need to use later in life in college or career or your future education. And so congratulations to all of you. We're gonna have you come up and take a picture with us. Also to Coach Tony Sarris, I think he's here as well in the background. Great job, great job, great job. All right, come on up.
All of you.
Okay. We're gonna continue on this evening. And tonight, our second recognition is for Davash Mamadi. Davash is, come here with his dad. Come on up, Davash. So I learned tonight that we honor Davash back when he was in fourth grade as well, when he won a state championship back in fourth grade, right? Okay, also, Davash is a past Weller student, past Russell Middle School student, and he took second place at the forty-sixth Cal chess state scholarship championship in the K-12 junior varsity section. So he won many rounds against some top opponents, and he happily has shared to this evening his second place trophy with us. And we're very proud of you. He received his award on August, no, excuse me, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Got it? Congratulations. Mr. Mamadi, you wanna come up? Congratulations, Davash. Okay, number three this evening. Dominic Alvarado, who's also a senior at Milpitas High School for being an amazing scholar athlete and being selected for the CCS Jeff Lamb Scholarship. This scholarship is named after one of our longtime coaches, PE teachers, and athletic directors. I think Dominic is with us virtually this evening. Dominic is a three-year player on the MHS football team, including the two thousand nineteen state championship squad, and he was all-league selection as well. In addition, he competed three years on the MHS Trojans track and field team. He worked as a swim instructor and youth volleyball, no, youth football coach, and was a member of the Boy Scouts, all while maintaining a three-point-four-three GPA. According to Jeff Lamb, he said, not only is Dominic an excellent athlete, he's also an outstanding leader on the team. Jeff Lamb retired in two thousand nineteen. The CCS scholarship is named in his name. He is someone who leads practices, has a great attitude, and a willingness to do anything for anyone. Dominic plans to continue his education at San Jose State University and pursuing a career in athletics as a trainer, an athletic director, and/or a coach. Nice job, Dominic. All right. And then going on to the fourth one we have here this evening. We have a recognition from Santa Clara County Office of Education for the California English Learner Roadmap, Pathway to Biliteracy or Seal of Biliteracy Awards and My Name, My Identity Program. Superintendent Jordan has some awards that we received from the county and from Assemblyman, from the assembly. Alex Lee, thank you, I blanked on that. And this evening, we have some folks in our audience here who are representing the many individuals who are a part of this work. Co-principals Kristen Prolo and Claudia Cardenas, as well as, I think, Raul Patina. Come on up. Also, possibly virtually or in person, we have world language leads Terracita Romero and Jeanette Barnes-Vargas, who are here. They helped, are they virtual? Are they in person? Okay. Jeanette started the, and implemented the Spanish four class. We offer it at Milpitas High School, which enables many of our students to obtain their California Seal of Biliteracy. Again, this award goes out to so many people who are not here because it's the collective work of many that allows us to offer this. Congratulations to all of those who were participants in working towards this process and great honor.
Okay, I'm very excited to recognize the next one is our Milpitas Knights of Columbus and Ocean Market. Tonight, we have our longtime supporter, Guang Allison Tosa. He also used to be one of our board members. And so we have him together along with Ming Kwak from Ocean Market. And we would like to recognize you for all your support and your fundraising to help our special ed post-secondary and CBI class. So Guang and Ming, can we invite you to come to the podium? And I understand, so you guys have raised a lot of money for us this year, so.
Okay. All right, yeah. Let me read a statement here. Yeah, good evening. Tonight, the Knights of Columbus. Okay. Yeah, good evening. Tonight, the Knights of Columbus, Saint Elizabeth Council eighty-seven forty-seven, presented a donation check in the amount of five thousand and nine dollars and nineteen cents to Milpitas Unified School District for special education program at Milpitas High School. We would like to express our gratitude for the generosity and support of our members and donors, families and friends, Father Andy Ligott, and Father Jung Yuen, and Saint Elizabeth parish community, Milpitas Unified School District Board Member, superintendent, and staff, teachers, students, student volunteers, and parents. Also, to Ocean Supermarket for your consistent and strong support year after year. We have been very successful because we all work together. And thank you. So with me here, we have Ms. Ming Kwak. Before I present the check, before I present the check, actually, what I'd like to do is that we also have recognition from the Knights of Columbus for Ocean Supermarket. This is a certificate of appreciation. So I mean, thank you very much for all of your support. Actually, yeah, together. Okay, now, now we're presenting the check. There are two checks here. There are two checks. Thank you for your support too. We work together. There are two checks here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Guang. Thank you, Ming, for your support. Thank you. And our next item is recognition of Katie Yu, the owner of Bayview Golf Club. Bayview Golf Club has been provided many in-kind donations to MUSD and offering a beautiful setting for fundraising event, especially for our innovation campus project and fundraisers. So I'm tonight, and I'm not so, I, do we have the, do we have the representative from Bayview here? I don't see it in the audience. But, no. Yeah, that's okay. So and on behalf of the school district, we appreciate Katie's for her support in our district, and we'll save the recognition for her, and we'll pass it on to her later then. Well, with that, that ends our recognition tonight. That's the fun part that our superintendent used to do. So tonight, we got to enjoy it.
Thank you very much, Mary Jude and Wendy. This is a team effort, and I was with Vice President Norwood at the San Jose Evergreen Community College District, presenting our MUSD Innovation Campus and opportunity for them to partner with us. And so I asked staff, our team, to be prepared in case I was not here in time to do recognitions. And I also asked Mr. Forsner to do my COVID report. So, Mr. Forsner, would you like to do it? Or? I think you could do it, but in the meantime, I have an important person to present to the community, the Curtner community in particular. And that is our new, oh, thank you. That is our new principal of Curtner Elementary, Mr. Kevin Slaven, who many of you know as Assistant Principal Slaven at Russell Middle School. Mr. Slaven has now been with us. This is his third year. I think he started just before COVID. And he, while he is at the middle school currently, he does have elementary experience. He also has experience as the director of after-school programs with the YMCA. He has a deep and sincere desire to serve the community of Curtner. And he actually has been a resident in the Curtner area for many years. And he shared with me when I was talking with him about leadership that he is drawn to serving the Curtner community, and he wishes to do so for great many years. And it's where he sees himself growing, and I will use the mascot, and soaring in leadership. And so, Mr. Slaven, would you like to say a few words?
Definitely. It's a one-page, I think, is that, is that okay? Okay. Good evening, MUSD School Board and the Milpitas community. I stood here a few years ago to accept the position of Assistant Principal at Thomas Russell Middle School. The challenges that the pandemic brought to not only our school, but also inside homes, taught me just how important it is to build healthy relationships, foster a supportive community, and be present as a school leader. I want to thank Russell for welcoming me into their wonderful community and sharing so much with me. The level of dedication, care, and empathy that every staff member had for each and every student has made such a lasting impression on me, and I am truly appreciative to have been a part of it. Through life's challenges and adversities, my path to becoming an educator has taught me just how important positive relationships are in schools and the need for restorative support systems that are available to every student. From being an after-school leader to an assistant principal and all the roles in between, I have always served my school community to the fullest and have strove to build the climate and culture that supports every student, family, and staff. As I embark on this new journey as principal, I want to thank everyone that has had a role in shaping me into who I am today. I also want to thank the Curtner community for giving me the opportunity to serve, support, and lead their school. Most importantly, I want to thank my partner Jessica and our two daughters for having the most profound impact on me becoming a servant to the community. Curtner Elementary School holds a special place in my heart because up until a year ago, the Curtner neighborhood was where my family called home. From celebrating my daughter's first steps outside on the playground to excitedly trying to get a glimpse of the nesting eagles, Curtner was a place where families could feel safe and welcomed. I want the Curtner community to know that I value every single one of them and will dedicate my career to ensuring that all students are engaged and have the tools to be successful as they move on to middle school and beyond, that staff are safe, supported, and heard, and that families and all stakeholders are engaged in the growth of Curtner Elementary School. Thank you again for this opportunity to lead and further develop the culture of we in the Milpitas Unified School District. I look forward to being on campus in these coming days and learning more about our students, staff, and families. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Principal Slaven and Director Kusunoki. I would like to thank you for the time that you stepped up since August to fill in as the to fill in as the leader of Kertner and Kertner staff. I'd like to thank you too for shared leadership and for working with Director Kusunoki in leading our Kertner Eagles through this year and especially this difficult year of transitioning from online back to in-person learning amongst all of the very many challenges, including the surge. And you have all really just flown and soared. And we do look forward, Director Kusunoki, to you coming back and leading alongside our learning and development partners, as you have been, but in a full-time capacity. So, thank you all, and we look forward to the success of everyone in the Kertner community and in our district. Mr. Forsner, would you like to do the COVID report?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, I see we have the slides up on the screen. So this first slide is the case rate per 100,000 as of May 6, 2022, within Santa Clara County. So as you see, the vax, for those who are vaccinated, it's 25 per 100,000, and that is up 13 from the last time we gave the report. For our unvaccinated, it is 92 per 100,000, and that is unfortunately up 50.7% from our last meeting. Overall, as a county, it is 25.7 per 100,000, and that is up 12.9. I would like to point out that the Public Health Department indicates that the case rate is still not near where it was during the surge and that there are fewer numbers of hospitalized individuals than there were at the low point of COVID prior to the surge. More people have vaccines and boosters, and cases have been reported milder than before. Next slide, please. Okay, this is our vaccination rates throughout Santa Clara County. Right now, it is 75.1% vaccinated ages 5 through 17, 70.1% eligible with the booster or boosted, and 85.8 of all ages have vaccination. And it's slightly up in each of those categories, less than a percentage point. Next slide, please. Okay, and these are the MUSD case numbers. So our total numbers as of April 25, 2022, we've had 623 at the elementary level, 318 at the secondary level, and 149 of our employees, team members, for a total of 1,090. Our COVID cases total as of May 9, 2022, you could see there on the screen. I'll just go to the total number, which is 1,258. As a district, we continue to maintain masks as strongly recommended on our campuses. And we base that on the Public Health Department. And unless it determines that there is a breakout, and we will then mandate that masks are worn throughout our district if there is a breakout. Or at any specific schools, if we see that, we will mandate masks for that specific site. We continue to monitor and will notify all if conditions are such that masks are once again mandated. Next slide, please. The county is now in the yellow designation, which is a medium risk. As you'll see there, masking in schools continues to be strongly recommended when students are present. And for those at high risk, we were, you know, please talk with a doctor about masking and other precautions. Next slide, please. And that brings me to a much more happier place as we are going to show our MUSD Navigators video where Russell and Rancho Middle School students starred in it. And it's about why MUSD schools are a great place for education.
Hi, my name is Meri Adatha, and I'm an eighth grader here at Thomas Russell Middle School.
Hi, my name is Dominique Walker, and I'm an eighth grader at Thomas Russell Middle School.
My name is Emily Fortes, and I'm an eighth grader here at Rancho Middle School.
Hi, I'm Jelani, and I'm a seventh grader at Rancho Middle School.
Thomas Russell Middle School is a great place to go because of how diverse the people are, and there's all sorts of different cultures and colors.
Rancho Middle School is a great place to go to school because of the friends that I've made here. A lot of them are friends that are new.
Right now, I'm doing the environmental club where we plant different types of plants and try to save the environment.
Here at Rancho, I played in the girls' soccer team, and we had an undefeated season, and we got to play in a brand-new field. And the team, we bonded really good together, and I made like a lot of memories on that team.
I'm looking forward to attending Milpitas High School next year because of the accelerated courses, such as the math class and the English class. And I'm also looking forward to the electives that they offer.
I'm excited to go to MHS next year because I'm excited to make new friends and make memories with like new people.
Come join me at MUSD.
And discover what's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Forsner, and thank you too for putting together our enrollment campaign, which we kicked off several weeks ago. And you'll see on our social media posts a variety of stories and also postings such as this that Mr. Forsner has put together with the team so that those new to our city can see why they need to go no further than MUSD. Now, that brings us to our cabinet reports. And we'll start with Assistant Superintendent Wen Zhang.
Thank you, Cheryl. Good evening, everyone. First, tonight, I would like to give a big shout out to our student nutrition supervisors, Fatima Ghani and Suchada Ghani and Fatima Titap. They did a fantastic job in organizing today's district-wide bagel delivery for employee recognition. Despite being shorthanded, they stepped up and demonstrated their strong leadership skills. We had a successful operation today. Staff really appreciated having this tradition back and enjoy the bagels. And tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM is our Quarterly Bond Oversight Committee Meeting. It's a public meeting, and you are all welcome to attend. The agenda is posted on the district website. An update will be provided on the district's bond projects, including the budget, the construction timeline. So that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent. And now, our Executive Directors of Learning and Development, Preeti Johari and Mary Jude Dorpinghaus.
Good evening, Superintendent Jordan and Board Members. This evening, I will share updates on the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOP for short. This is funding we have received from the state for after-school and intercessions. Intercessions are academic programming provided during school breaks. This could be February, April break, or summer. Preliminary allocations for MUSD is in the one, a little over 1.6 billion. Last meeting, you heard me speak about the April Academy Program. This was a pilot run at a program we hope to expand next year. This summer, our summer school programming, which you'll learn more about this evening with reports from our two directors, will also be funded by ELOP. In addition, as we plan for next school year, we have been surveying families of our unduplicated students. Unduplicated students means English-language learners, students who meet the income-free, meet the income requirements for free or reduced lunch and/or are foster youth. We've been reaching out to their families about after-school programming for the coming school year. Our goal is to increase access to existing programming at our elementary schools, specifically after the bell and YMCA by removing financial barriers. A little over 700 families have expressed interest at this time. I'm also happy to report that our CSACE 2021 Plan was officially approved by the state last Friday. We held a CSACE stakeholder meeting this afternoon to provide updates. One of the updates that we shared with the group was the draft equity policy that we shared at the last board study session so that we could gather further stakeholder input. I'll be bringing that back to the Culture of We Equity team later this week.
In addition to the celebrations that Assistant Superintendent Zhang mentioned, May is also Better Hearing and Speech Month. And so I want to do a quick shout out to all of our speech-language pathologists and speech-language pathologist assistants who help with our students and our adults with their communication skills throughout the school year. It is also National Mental Health Month, and our gratitude goes out to all of our mental health clinicians, associates, trainees, and psychologists, as well as our Dr. Rebecca Cole and Sandra Quintana, who oversee our mental health programming throughout the district. This concludes our LND report for this evening.
Thank you very much. And now, I'd like to turn it over to our Matos staff. And we have Teacher on Special Assignment, Ms. Vivian Sun, who is going to introduce their presentation.
Hello, everyone. I'm Vivian Sun. I'm the Teacher on Special Assignment at Matos. And for our report today, we are so excited to share with you our video. Should I share it, or is someone ready to share screen?
We will go ahead and share it for you, Ms. Sun.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jackie Bo Felbinger, Principal at Matos Elementary. Thank you for inviting Matos to share our work today. It is my great pleasure to introduce our very special representatives tonight. We have Mr. Ryan Ison, our Night Custodian, Ms. Amberly Shay, fourth, fifth-grade learning community teacher, Dr. Venet Chara, he is a parent and our school site council president, and his son Vedant Chara, who is a fourth-grade student in the Determination Base.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Delphin Ryan Ison. I've been an employee of Milpitas Unified School District for three years, and I have helped Matos since its open in its first year. Matos is a very close-knit family, and it makes working here great because everyone works together and steps in where needed. I feel close to our staff and students because everyone works together to solve problems, and people are really nice here. That is really important because every day is different. With the changes happening with construction and pandemic, we are all excited for the future of Matos and opening the rest of the campus next year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amberly Shay, and I'm a teacher in the four-five learning community at Matos Elementary. The start of the school year was met with a lot of excitement. The students were really excited to be back on campus for the first time after more than a year. However, with that came its own challenges, including great academic, social, and emotional needs. Matos prioritized those needs by sticking closely to our RENI community model and differentiating instruction to meet our students' independent needs. For example, the four-five learning community grouped our students based on common writing needs to provide targeted instruction. We constantly made adjustments to support the continued success of each student. Extended learning opportunities outside of school hours were also offered to students who needed more support. Additionally, communities delivered SEL lessons based on what their students needed. Topics included growth mindset, empathy, and conflict resolution. Mrs. Rubio, our mental health counselor, further supported Matos by providing SEL lessons to all bases so that there was alignment in terms of the strategies and the vocabulary that we use to address those problems. Through the constant collaboration of all these parties, all students are making academic and social emotional gains. Matos has always prioritized and put its students first, and this past year was a testament to how we work towards the success of each student as a school.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to represent Naval Matos Elementary School as a parent and school site council president from last two years. School has been going through a lot of transition, ongoing construction, new classes, and hybrid study model due to pandemic. Naval Matos has been able to sustain a very cordial and stress-free environment from due to the efforts of Naval Matos staff. The school has strong emphasis on child development, happiness, and safety. An example is the coordination between different staff, principal, and parents for dropping and picking up the students. On personal front, I have been chairing the SSC meetings at Naval Matos with Dr. Felbinger and staff. I enjoy the clarity of goals such as performance reviews, benchmarks, and catering the needs of underprivileged students. The School Parent Teacher Association has very good activities such as movie nights, STEM programs, and math programs. And this kind of creates a fun environment between parents, teachers, and the schools.
Hi, my name is Vedant, and I'm in fourth grade at Matos Elementary. Last year, I was in Zoom meetings, learning, and talking with friends. But now, in person, I can be active with my friends, play, and experience more. In person, I also develop more friendships, and that's helped me out a lot. For example, with virtual friendships, it's easy to ditch and block each other, but in person, we talk about it instead. We can work out our friendship by giving space, confessing what we did wrong, saying sorry, and forgiving each other. Teachers have helped me learn a lot in studies. I used to not like multiplication, and that's my favorite thing. Overall, I've learned that I could go out to people when I need help and share my opinion. Not, and not be stiff and give up. I hope in the future that people learn to be kind and help each other out because that's what Matos taught me to do.
Great job, Vedant. And thank you, Dr. Chara, Ms. Shay, and Mr. Ryan. We appreciate the boards and the district's support. This year, our community overcame the challenges of returning to in-person learning full-time during a pandemic. We solve problems along the way with patience, trust, and communication. We can't wait for the next chapter in the Matos story with the full opening of our school next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sun, and especially for stepping in so that Principal Bo Felbinger can be with her daughters at their softball banquet where one of them is earning her varsity letter tonight. Thank you for the team effort. And that concludes our superintendent's cabinet report.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Okay, board group agreements. The board group agreements are provided for the board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected official. Per Bylaw 9001 amended on November 26, 2019, board members and superintendent agrees to keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus, ask questions for our own understanding, be open and honest with each other, no surprises including unapproved communications with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and/or board, be aware that our behavior in the community reflects us as a team, communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open session and in advance on public board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act, participate in professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader, actively support the culture of we in action deed and opportunity to serve the students and parents of the Milpitas Unified School District. Item number 15, Board Communications Requests. This board, this part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on their activities as selected representatives. School board members may request the placement of items in future board agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The Board Student Representative reports on school and student activities. Reports are limited to 90 seconds each. Scott, if you can help me see if there's any students on, online, virtual?
Yeah, we have two student board reps virtually on here. Did you want me to call on them?
Yes, please.
Sure, let's start with student board. Sure, let's start with Student Board Rep Maribhakta of the Middle College High School. Go right ahead, Maribh.
Sorry, high school board and various community members that are present here today. Just this week, we learned that our WASC accreditation has just been improved, and it is no surprise to the community here, but we are still celebrating. As well as, many of our students have started to implement their community impact project solutions. For example, me and my project partner Karen just finished two presentations to Thomas Russell middle schoolers on immigrant youth and knowing their rights and what might be used to identify them. Expect many more events from our school in the coming weeks. Looking to next year, our school has just issued acceptance letters for those who are joining our cohort next year, and we're looking forward to them joining our school. Students are also in the process of starting to register for their fall courses starting tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. They will be taking courses at the Milpitas Extension Campus, as well as the San Jose City College Main Campus. Student government is also running elections for next year for our ASG MMC's President, Vice President, and Senior Class Commissioner, so expect those results very soon. Because it is nearing the end of the year, many of our students, including myself, are looking forward to our class trip taking place this Friday, where we'll be going to San Francisco's Museum of Modern Art. Thank you for listening, and that is all.
Thank you so much, Student Board Rep Bakta. We will move on to our Milpitas High School Student Board Rep, Sydney Wong. Go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. So AP testing is currently happening, and students are encouraged to take time to themselves and study in a very healthy way. It'll be going on for the rest of this week, and it went on last week, so it seems that students, especially upperclassmen, have and will be extremely busy and stressed in extent, but we can only hope that they take great care of themselves during this time period. We recently had a Slime Noon Time, as an example, to relieve the stress, and students could make their own slime and let out their stress by just playing with it. And then we had prom about two weeks ago at the Tech Museum, and it was a success. There was a lot of preparation, and it just turned out well. There were many students who went, and it was just a big social event, even though math weren't mandatory, so COVID was a little bit of a concern. But luckily, there was only a few students who had COVID, and then they were able to distance themselves and get better within the past weeks. And at the end of this week, we will have our senior grad night, and then the students will go, and it's at the Santa Cruz Boardwalk. And building upon that, we have our end-of-the-year events. And there will just be a few spirit days, as well as just time for the classes to get together and just celebrate the end of the year. And that concludes my report. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we have Kimberly Lopez from the Cal Hills, our student rep?
Yes. All right. Our awards night was on Tuesday, May 3rd, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. We had an amazing turnout. 61 students received a total of 183 awards for categories of attendance, special recognition, subject area awards, and perpetual plaque nominations, community service, and scholarships. The April Academy, along with the art class, displayed their work in a gallery. There is also a video from the academy that was shown and can be found on our school website. And now on to Lions Club. Their members attended the Relay for Life Cancer Walk and fundraiser in Santa Clara. We raised almost $800 for Relay. And we've just completed our three-day WASC, Western Association of Schools and Colleges, visit to verify 100-page report we completed in February. The visit went well, and we are expecting full accreditation of our school for the next six years. We will get the final report back in the summer. As for Fly Fresh Lifelines for Youth, their graduation ceremony took place last Wednesday. Approximately 10 students graduated from the Fly program this semester. Seniors are working to finish up their last credits and community service hours this month. The Cal Hills graduation ceremony will be on June 2nd at the Milpitas Sports Center on the athletic field. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See, now we're moving on to school board members to give their report. Is member Michael Tsai there?
Yes, I'm here. So I will begin my report. I did multiple activities, and for the sake of time, I'll keep it brief. I attended a CCSBA Zoom meeting with Congresswoman Anna Eschew, listened to her thoughts on a lot of things. I attended the swearing-in of a new Assembly Member for San Francisco, Matt Haney. We talked about education. It was a good talk. And I went to the API Coalition Summit, a large gathering of Asian-American elected officials from the area. Thank you.
Okay, member Honlian?
Yes, good evening, community members, board. My activities for the past two weeks. I've attended the API Summit along with other board members. Also attended Cal Hills Award Night and the New Teacher Induction Celebration. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And how about clerk now?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Since the last board meeting, my activities have been attending the Road School Site Council Meeting, volunteered for the Milpitas Little League Snack Shack, attended the API Coalition Meeting, attended the Cal Hills Awards Night, attended the Rotary Golf Tournament, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And Vice President Norwood?
Thank you, Madam President. One of my board member assignments is Metro Ed, and I attended the Metro Ed Tour with Santa Clara County Board Supervisor Joe Smidion. I also had the opportunity to participate in the Milpitas National Day of Prayer this past Friday. I had the opportunity to speak to students at the Cal Hills Career Fair. I also attended with other board members the Cal Hills Awards. Another one of my assignments is the Milpitas Economic Development and Trade Commission for the city of Milpitas, representative from the Milpitas Unified School District. I also attended the New Teacher Induction. And finally, this evening, I had the opportunity to watch the Superintendent present at the San Jose City College Evergreen Community College District Board Meeting on the MUSD Innovation Campus and why they should be partners with us, not only in programming, but also helping us finance the program. That was for Wendy. I do have two requests. One, I would like to have an understanding at the middle school, the secondary level, what we do in the district in terms of fentanyl awareness. There have been several recent fatalities in Santa Clara County with youth as related to fentanyl, so I would like to know what we are doing in the school district and on behalf of that, to make sure that the student's aware of the danger of fentanyl. And then also for next year coming up, now that we are back in school full-time, the calendar for how we're going to promote Walk to School Days so that we can minimize the number of cars on the road where possible and promote what we all used to have to do, when we used to walk through snow for 10 miles to school. Our kids of this generation deserve that opportunity too. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood. And as for me, I attended the Brussels First Track Me at Brussels and checked out their new field. It was really nice to be there. I attended the Chamber of Mixtape and Board Meeting. I also attended the California Bay Area 5 County API Elected Official Summit, attended Cal Hills Award Nights, and also the New Teacher Induction Celebration, attended Burnett School Site Council Meeting, and over the weekend, I volunteered for the Milpitas Rotary Golf Tournament. Okay, so...
There's one other item. There is a request. Grad Night is this Friday, I believe, for the high school. There is a need for additional volunteers, that teachers, or board members, those that have the ability to volunteer to support Grad Night. There is an additional need for volunteers out there as well.
Yes, and thank you for that. And if Principal Rojas can send us information as to when and all that stuff, we can sign up. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to Item 16, Reports. A, Business Services, the Innovation Campus Construction Planning Timeline and Logistic Updates. Assistant Superintendent, Business Services.
Okay, good evening again. Well, thank you, Chris and Cheryl, to advocate for our Innovation Campus campaign. We still need that financial support. And you know, this June, this next month, we're going to start construction. So tonight, we have our bond consultant Travis, along with Ryan from Block, here to provide the board an update on our construction timeline and some logistic of moving the district office. So I'll turn it over to Travis.
Hi, good evening. It's good to see everybody tonight. We're happy to present this to you tonight as a general overview of schedule and a logistics plan for this site. I think it was timely, the video on Matos Elementary. So many of those video clips, you could see construction behind them, and all those wonderful accomplishments occurred at Naval Matos during a $40 million construction project. And so you can see the success of the logistics plan by Block, because they were on that one as well. They kept kids safe. They made it as comfortable as they could for staff. Staff was remarkably understanding over there. And it's been just a pleasure working with Jackie. So that site handled construction very, very well, and I thought Block did a really good job just mitigating any issues, usually before they came up, but along the way as well. And you'll see that demonstrated in Ryan's plan tonight. This one's a little more complex because there's so many different programs that happen on this site, and there's so many different phases to this project. This is a very large project. It's larger than the Matos project. We have parking on both sides. You'll see we have some people who are going to get some steps in certain times of this. And this is probably the millionth iteration. I don't think Ryan slept in three months trying to put this together to make it as functional as it can be. We had a great meeting with staff yesterday. We had some really valuable input. There's people that they live it and breathe it every day, so they know how this impacts them. And we'll listen throughout the entire process until we cut that second or third ribbon and make those adjustments as necessary to make it as easy as possible on staff. It won't be 100% smooth, but as smooth as it can be. As you know, the Innovation Campus Phase 1, those first four buildings you see is coming up. We'll have a GMP for the Board of Approval at the next board meeting. Anticipated groundbreaking on June the 6th. So it's becoming a reality. This vision that you all have been working on for two years now is coming to fruition. So they'll start with mobilization abatement. They need to get rid of this building. They need to get rid of the 100 building, so there'll be a process there. We'll do a July groundbreaking, just to make sure everything's settled in here. Things kind of calm down a little bit in July, bring some folks out, celebrate this huge monumental starting point for this Innovation Campus. Phase 1 is scheduled to be complete in 2023, August of 2023. That's a pretty realistic timeline because you all chose the Folia Building, which is a PC building. They built this building a number of times. They know what hiccups they may face. It's not a one-time build like we're going to see over at Milpitas High. They know what they're doing. They've assembled this before. So barring a much-needed El Nino year, we should be in pretty good shape. Phase 2 completion, the other two buildings and remainder of the site, we're looking at August of 2024. That's a little tight because there's this gap between, you know, I can't really start Phase 2 in June of next year, but if you haven't moved people into the Phase 1 building, so we're cognizant of that. Anything that could accelerate Phase 1 would, of course, help with the start point of Phase 2, along with the completion of that. And then Phase 3, which would be the Building 1,000 and 900, all those plans that we're thinking about for that, that would hopefully run in parallel, provide there's funding available, parallel with the Phase 2 and have that same completion date. The next two slides, I'll change over to Ryan, let him speak to those, and then I'll come back up. But this is his handy work on what may happen over the summer months, and then it'll change after we're moving into the remainder of the construction. This is Ryan Holman.
Good to see you in person.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So I don't know who's in control here, but if we could go to the... You're doing it? Okay, you can go to the next slide. This is, there's two slides here, so there's a lot of information here. I wouldn't worry too much about the detail, but there's two slides. This slide is our site logistics plan for the site for the summertime. And then the next slide is for the school year time, so starting in August. So the sort of overarching theme of this one is that we'll have a full perimeter out there, you know, driven fencing with dust screen to keep ourselves and construction activities and workers separate from, you know, the building occupants that'll remain and the buildings that do remain through Phase 1. We will have some interface, though, with occupants in the parking lots. You know, when we have deliveries coming on site, when occupants are, you know, staff or students are parking and walking to classrooms or getting dropped off from parents. We know the Montessori school in Building 900 stays active all year round, so there is going to be some interaction in the parking lots, so we'll have full traffic control anytime we have deliveries on site. We'll have somebody out there with flags, probably two people, one in front and back of each delivery. And then what we do on all of our school projects, and we'll continue to do on this one, we've done at Matos as well, is we'll get the bell schedule, which we already have, but we'll, when we have our subcontractors on site, part of the site orientation is, here's the bell schedule. Do not schedule deliveries during the busy times, in the mornings and the afternoons, and so those deliveries will happen midday whenever possible. And so we understand there's going to be some interaction, and so we've got some contingency plans there. And like Travis mentioned, we did have a meeting with staff earlier this week, and they did bring up some really good points, some stuff that they understand, having lived and breathed it on site, so we're making some adjustments to our plan to try and accommodate them as best we can, understanding that they got to live through this. You know, we're only there for a couple of years. They'll be there forever, and so we're going to try our best to mitigate that. So if you go to the next slide, Wendy, I just want to point out that our plan is before the school year to be able to give full pedestrian access from all parking lots as they have it now. It's a little bit of a longer walk, unfortunately. It won't be in the snow in Milpitas, but it is a little bit of a longer walk. They'll have a few more steps to get in, unfortunately. But we'll have a temporary pathway that's completely separate from construction, all the way from the parking lot to wherever they need to go in the existing buildings. We'll have a full-time staff, of course, on site. Those blue boxes that you probably can't even read because it's so small, but those two blue boxes are our field staff that'll be there all the time whenever there's any work going on on site, from before 7:00 a.m. to after 3:00 or 4:00 p.m. every day. So... Any questions on this before Travis comes back up to talk about the next, his last slide here? Yeah?
So let's say like Phase 1 and 2, after it's completed, are we able to like move in right away, or we have to wait for the whole construction of the buildings?
Good question. So this Phase 1, which is four of the six new buildings, when those are done, our plan is for people to move in, occupy, use those buildings, and we kind of flip over, take over the other half of the site. Leave the new buildings occupied. Everybody gets to enjoy the new buildings, and then we go build the last two and the little modernization of Building 600. So yeah, as soon as we're done with any of the buildings, they get occupied and get used.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Don't we usually show this stuff on that screen?
Well, that screen doesn't work very well for video stuff.
Okay.
Oh, for Zoom.
Very good. On the last slide. So the relocation, we have a little bit of a shuffle going on. So as you may recall, when we did the Spangler Modernization, we added six new portables over there. Brian Shreve had a brilliant idea that, why don't we save the three best of the old and replace the three that were at MOT2, were being used as storage, and one was filters and stuff for HVAC that were built shortly after the pyramids? And so we did that. We stored them for quite some time at Spangler. We have now moved those over there. So the one on the far north end is going to become the new Facilities Planning Office. And so we're doing a mild renovation of that, getting everything in there that we need for the Facilities Planning Office, and then a plan room too, so MOT staff can come in to review plans and need to repair things, things of that nature. So that takes Deanna Harn and myself out of Room 702. Relocates us over there. HR is then going to shuffle into 701, 702. So we've done a little minor remodel in there, make sure they have the confidentiality they need, those sorts of things. So we're trying to make that their new home. That move will occur Friday, Friday the 13th. What could go wrong? So that's coming up this Friday. Cheryl and her staff will be moving over to the Randall World. this Friday. Cheryl and her staff will be moving over to the Randall World Languages School as well, the board meeting. So we have another board meeting in here before we can disassemble that dais. And we'll shuffle some of the stuff into building one thousand, the stuff that we won't be using during construction, podium and some various other things. We'll shuffle over to Randall and, and re-mobilize Cheryl and Scott over there. Let's see. Board meetings, we'll move to the new boardroom at the completion of phase three workforce development center, early childhood education center. And that's, that's a vision that we're working on, moving forward on, you know, how would that work, that sort of thing. I know I've been over to the Fremont High School building where they have that beautiful boardroom kind of built in with some other facilities there. It seems really appropriate. And then we talked about the superintendent relocating over there. As far as the shuffle goes of, from the first four buildings being done, everyone except Cal Hills will shuffle into their permanent location after phase one. Cal Hills is the only group of people that we couldn't, because they are phase two, and they have to be out of those. Really two, three, four hundred have to be outside. They can tear them down. So out of all of the people, Cal Hills is the only one having to move two times. Well, yeah, fair and true. And HR. So.
So for Cal Hills, we're looking at either having them in the adult ed wing or part of the second high school wing. We have to determine that.
Yeah, we're looking at that, where the space is available. We're trying to do the shared space in the adult ed area. We'd like to keep as much of the new student area available for that purpose. And then as we get moving forward, we're going to see how we can distribute that, those students. I think Cal, Cal Hills has an enrollment of about a hundred twenty right now. So we're working with Carl on that. The only other reasonably large item we're working on is to move food services. And so I've reached out to environmental health to see what efforts we need to take to temporarily house a warming kitchen somewhere else on campus because accessibility to that area, it, it won't be available. So we're trying to work with that. We will certainly want to be in compliance with all local agencies. And so we have that outreach ongoing. We'll resolve that issue one way or another. I heard some districts actually use like a food truck for that. But I don't know that we need to go that far because it's a warming kitchen and it's not actually, I don't know how much food they're actually cooking there. But I'm having some dialogue with nutrition services as well. So everyone's in the loop on that.
Possibly maybe we could do something similar to what we did for Matos with that little kiosk. It might be a larger kiosk.
Yeah, the kiosk ultimately, I think you could serve out of a food cart of a kiosk, but there were some issues with, they like the code base and all those sorts of things. So that's why I did the outreach, just to make sure we're complying. You'd hate to have them come shut your meal service down eleven AM when everybody's hungry. So we'll make sure we're in compliance with environmental, that's for sure. Yep. Any further questions?
Thank you for the somewhat detailed report in terms of, we know that there's a lot of moving parts and there are some unknowns. Thank you for the willingness to continue to communicate with as many stakeholders as possible and make adjustments on the fly. We know that this is the, if not the oldest, the second oldest site in the, in the Milpitas Unified School District Education System as far as what this campus was. The thing that I'd like to make sure of is that we make sure that we retain and locate all the historical types of relics or things that could be around here that represents many, many generations of graduates from AR High School, that we restore those and we find some way to ensure that those are incorporated into the new designs of these campuses or possibly in a room or some, just someplace like that. Because again, this was the first high school in Milpitas. This was the first high school on this side of town in Santa Clara County, the next one being James Lick. So there's a lot of historical memories. Number of the alumni come back year after year and even host events over there to celebrate their experience here. So I just want to make sure that that becomes incorporated into the process as well. And thank you for your leadership on this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have is learning and development summer school twenty twenty-two report, executive director, learning and innovation.
Good evening. This evening, I am excited to call up our secondary and elementary directors. The two of them have collaborated extensively with each other, with teachers, with elementary and secondary administrators to come up with a very comprehensive summer school program, which builds on past practices and also creates space for us to, to engage in new professional development and learning. And Raquel has been deeply involved in this work. As we've noted, she's been wearing two hats. And her and Marissa, this has been one of the, the first projects that they've deeply collaborated on this year. Thank you. That's not quite the right presentation. Let's go to the next one.
Good evening, honorable board members, Superintendent Jordan and executive cabinet members. We are excited to present to you our summer extended learning program plans for this summer twenty twenty-two. I'm Marissa Quinety, the secondary director.
And I'm Raquel Kusnoki, elementary director.
Welcome back, Raquel.
Thank you.
And we should also have with us virtually our district leader for the extended school year, Stacy Lillard, and also our summer school administrators, Andrew Din, who will be overseeing fourth through eighth grades, and Anastasia Rissaphinus, and Nicole Klein, who will be sharing responsibilities at the high school campus and the K to three campuses.
Okay, so as, I just want to update everybody on what the goals are and/or the purpose of this whole program. And first and foremost, we want to provide the ELO program to our most vulnerable student groups to give them extended learning time to master grade level or content standards through project-based, project-based learning that are meaningful, relevant, and rigorous. This is also an opportunity for us to build capacity of our teachers as well as our administrators and as well as ourselves through professional development, shared professional development that we will be providing together for our team.
Okay, next slide, please. We just wanted to give you an overview of all of the programs we will be providing. We have some general education programs in all of the grade level spans, some targeted support classes, and then our special education program. We are hoping to have a two-way bilingual literacy program. We are still in the process of hiring staff for that program. So we may or may not have that this summer, but we are hopeful we will. We will also be providing some A to G courses for our English language high school learners and also partnering with San Jose City College and San Jose State, be providing Math Jam, a math acceleration summer program for our high school students and Tech Nest as well. Our targeted support classes will be provided to our newcomer students. Those are our students who are newly arrived to the United States within the last year. We will be providing some extended learning opportunities for our students in the summit program. Girl Start is not our program. We are going to be partnering with them for a week in, at the, at the fourth through eighth grades site. And then also offering high school credit recovery classes, which this year we're hoping to provide more opportunities for our high school students to really show mastery and also provide support for our incoming ninth graders who may need a bridge. That's why the program is called Bridge for social emotional learning and really connections as they are thinking about entering into high school, along with our special education programs to support our students who have services provided through their IUPs.
I think you pretty much covered it all. Again, back at the elementary level. So this summer, we're able to actually provide services or support for kinder all the way to twelfth grade, which is great. It's amazing. So at the elementary level, of whether it's English language learners or the general ed love for literacy, all students will have additional time to practice mastering foundational literacy and math skills through activities and hands-on projects, which we, we actually had twelve teachers that applied. I mean, there was a, we have a good number of teachers who are ready to rock and roll with that love for literacy. As Marissa indicated, the two-way bilingual literacy, we're still waiting to see if we can get that staffed. And it looks like you covered everything else that's on there.
Can someone speak to Math Jam right quick? Tell me a little bit more about that?
Sure. So Math Jam is not something new. It's a program that we've been offering for a number of years at the high school level. We partner with San Jose City College, and it's a program that allows our students to accelerate in math. So Amanda Gross at the high school, our assistant principal, is leading that work.
So you just mentioned that ELO funds, you mentioned intervention, then we just mentioned Math Jam as acceleration. So is the, in the high school, in far as ELO, is the high school credit recovery, is that where that, the ELO dollars are coming? To help me connect the dots on that.
So our ELO funds are actually going to support a lot of this work, not our ESY, right, Mary Jude? That's a separate program, but we did want to capture it here because it is part of the courses that we will be offering, or the programming that we will be offering. Math Jam and Tech Nest are actually free for us. We are not, there's no cost associated for us. But the other programs, yes, we are for high school credit recovery. We need to partner with Edge Annuity to offer those courses, as well as all of our staffing needs. And PBL for fourth through eighth, I think you asked specifically about high school, but fourth through eighth and our bridge students, we are getting curriculum there and also training our students, our students and our staff, excuse me, for our PBL curriculum. And same with love for literacy, we are attaining some additional curriculum materials for our K through three grade levels.
Just to build on what they're saying, the, so the ELOP funding is not just for intervention work, it's expanded learning opportunities. So it can be both enrichment as well as intervention and academic support. And then the Tech Nest program is coming through our grant with San Jose State and San Jose City, the, it's the Tech Excellence Grant. And then Math Jam does have a cost, a small cost associated with that. And we're still working on funding for that one.
So I'm familiar with all of the programs. I guess the point that I was getting to is that we talked about intervention. We were talking about students reaching grade level. And I see nothing math-related except for Math Jam at the high school, which is an acceleration program. I don't see in the four, I see the PBL units and two-way bilingual literacy. I see love for literacy and two-way bilingual literacy in the general education space. And maybe it just didn't get listed here, but I don't see enough math. And when we look at our LCAP and our data in terms of our student performance, math is an area. And as many we know that math is a gatekeeper to a lot of things. So that's one of the comments that I have on the report, that I'd like to see information in the future on so that I have a better understanding of everything that we're offering. So we don't have to go into detail now.
I think our next slide will give a couple more outcomes.
If I could just touch on that little bit, project-based learning is going to embed both ELA and math. So it's going to be utilizing skills in reading and mathematical skills to apply into real-world projects. So for the learning outcomes, which is already, as you can see, again, going back to the early, I'm all about early intervention children, foundational skills in both math and ELA is going to be embedded in their curriculum. For our English language learning learners, it's going to, the program is aimed to support language development orally, reading, writing, and speaking and listening. And one most important piece that we are definitely going to be implementing this year, and we did last year, but more, more, a little more expert this year with SEL, to give the students more tools in how to self-regulate and manage and just awareness of where they are, not just for next year, but in the years to come. And again, going back, project-based learning is about critical thinking skills. It's taking the concept of what you understand, applying application is the highest form of learning for these children. So taking those skills, applying them, utilizing ELA and math to construct and create.
And could you also speak to Girl Start and with that, we'll support?
So we're going to have Girl Start the week of July fourth, which is actually only going to end up being four days because July fourth is a holiday. It's an all-day program. We will have a total of thirty students from Weller and Zanker because they're currently in the program right now. So it had been extended to thirty girls from both schools.
And it's focusing on?
Well, it's going to be, you know what, I have to, I can't remember from the top of my head.
It's coding and then also there's math with the coding.
Oh, correct. I'm sorry. My head is, yeah. So yes, coding and mathematical skill will be to empower the girls in the areas that's not really, it's to encourage them, empower them to go in that direction and explore.
So I'm just taking what I heard about intervention at the beginning and serving students and making sure that they came up. I mean, that was how we started and the utilization of the funds. And now I have an understanding that there's an expansion so that we can actually use those dollars that we would traditionally use for summer school. I mean, because we would have summer school regardless of ELO dollars, right? And now I'm being informed that the ELO dollars, we're doing pretty much, pretty much the same thing that we've done with ELO dollars. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that, and I just want to be clear on this, and this is one of the things that you're going to see from me kind of moving forward, is that this math being second, as far as literacy being the, the thing that's commented, commented on the most in terms of the work that we do, and math being second, because I'm listening. So just so that you're aware that I'm, we understand the pathways to being able to have the cognitive skills necessary, that an awareness and an emphasis on the ability to perform math all the way through is a pathway or a barrier. So I will look forward to, as we present on programs and those types of things in the future, that we can show that in this work, that math has a priority.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You will get that.
Continuing on for our learning outcomes, they're very similar for pre-K high school and ESY. We are going to be focusing on three signature practices from Castle for SEL, as Raquel has already talked about. Pre-K is really about developing foundational skills. And had I, I think, understood your question a little clearer, board member Norwood, we would have included that foundational skills are around both literacy and math. As you said, in high school, yes, the A to G courses will be offering as well as the credit recovery courses. There are equal, all content areas are going to be offered over the summer. And for ESY, again, I stated this already, but we're going to be providing mandated services as outlined in the IEP. So it's really based on students' needs. And we said this again, but it's collaboratively engaging students and inquiry-based learning. That's really what we are trying to do because we know if students are critical thinkers and problem solvers, they will be successful in all of the content areas. Next slide, please.
One more slide, please. So the last two programs that I do want to highlight, Summit Learning is specific to Palmeroy, Weller, and Russell. This is to give the students additional time again to complete their content focus areas of their platform. And for the bridge, again, it's focusing on the current eighth graders to give them a little a little more support and helping them to transition to high school through SEL, through the ninth grade courses, exposing them to the courses, introducing them to the teachers, and just giving them the additional support they need so that they, all they have to do is just move from one classroom to another.
And our Bridge students will also be using the PBL curriculum. Next slide. We are hoping to serve about 2,000 students with all of our different programming. That's a projection at this point, and I think in the fall, we will come back and let you know exactly how many students we have served. And last slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. So we wanted to end with this quote from Nelson Mandela, "It's not beyond our power to create a world in which all children have access to a good education." I think all of us here in the LND department, it's really about access for our students at all levels, intervention, those at grade level, and those who are ready to accelerate. Thank you.
Could you repeat that last statement for me, for me one more time?
I'm not sure I can do it word for word, but I will try. At LND, we really believe in providing access to all students regardless if they are at an intervention level, grade level level, or needing an accelerated pathway. I think I got pretty close.
Yeah. Thank you for adding the intervention to the second one.
I had it in the first.
And Summit has one T. On the previous slide, two slides ago, Summit has one T.
Thank you for that correction.
You're welcome.
Okay, I believe we have a public comment.
I have two.
Yeah, a couple of public comments.
Yes, we do. We have two hands raised. The first one is Robert Jung. Robert, we're going to enable your audio. Please take yourself off mute. You have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much. Good job, Marissa and Raquel, for presenting some great options for our students in the summer. However, I do have a question in general, and maybe I've missed it, but can you guys give us, or give me a better, better insight as to, I'm trying to get a feel for what is the need for our students, especially given that over the last couple of years, some students have had some learning loss. I'm trying to figure out where are the classes to provide those students the opportunity to catch up? Thank you.
Thank you for your call, Mr. Jung. So you're asking where the primary needs is, and as we look at data and being at Courtenor all year, the primary need is in the SEL. Why? Because if the students are not feeling safe, there's no learning, no matter how great the teacher is. We need to address the first and foremost, social-emotional learning. All those other pieces, we have them in place. We are monitoring the data, we're looking at the data, we're identifying the students who have the greatest needs. So going back to your question, what is a primary need, social-emotional learning?
I would add on also for some of our subgroups who haven't shown the same academic achievement, but also we know all students have experienced some, some learning loss, but really focusing on how our instructional practices are impacting students' growth. So over summer, we will be helping our teachers to really group our students so that we are focusing on the mastery of the standards, again, at all grade levels, and pulling small groups as needed to meet their individual needs.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we have another, yeah, we have two more. We have another public comment, Scott?
Yes, Nicole Klein. We are going to enable your audio. Please take yourself off mute. You have two minutes.
Perfect. Thank you, Scott. Board, so I also wanted to just chime in on some key features that we're adding to this summer's program for the high school. Well, not adding, we're just modifying to better support the needs of our students, specifically the integration of office hours. We're really going to be focusing on, it's not just about recovering the credit for summer school this year, it's all about establishing relationships and creating those positive adult connections with our, specifically our high school-level students, as well as our middle-school-level students, so that we can have long-term success with our kids. We're also going to be, with those office hours, supporting the growth that's going to generate long-term success. So Mr. Norwood, you mentioned the supports needed in math. We're not just looking at recovering credit for math too, because that's the area of need for the student. We're going to be providing them levels of support that's going to allow them to become student advocates. They're going to be able to gain those skills of being able to advocate with their new teachers in the following years, so that when they need help, they can ask for help. Because through my experience with summer school, that's, that's an area or a gap that our students have. And when we can establish those relationships over the summer, that can be transitioned into the general school year. And so those are some of the key features with this high school-level program that are going to make that shift from a traditional summer where it's just about recovering the credit and moving along, and making it a much more lasting, impactful program.
So if I heard, who's, um, by the way, who's leading summer school, the summer school campuses this year?
Do you mean the summer school administrators? So Nicole Klein and
Go ahead.
Anastasia Rysafinis are sharing duties at the high school campus, and then also the K to three campus, and then Andrew Din will be our middle grades, four through eighth administrator.
Thank you. Marissa, being new here, I want to let you know that I've always been a strong advocate for continuity during the summer school time, because it's a very unique opportunity time for kids to learn. And Nicole has been, Nicole, how many years have you been summer school principal?
It feels like a lifetime. I believe this is going to be year six.
So at some point, that's going to go away, and her, her leadership and continuity in that space has been very, very critical. She knows how to make things happen. So Nicole, thank you for being a part again, and I'm going to be sad when you pass the torch, but I'm grateful that you continue to work in that area. And I think I also heard that based on the feedback that you guys have noticed, that we are aware that there are learning deficiencies due to COVID, but the social-emotional need is so much greater for our students because they haven't had that interaction on campuses, and that's where we're looking to place our emphasis. Is that correct?
Yes. That is correct. And then we're going to, it's, yes, everything's embedded, foundation, social-emotional, then the academics come into play. So yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have another comment.
Yes, we have J.R., whether, hand raised, we've enabled your audio. Take yourself off mute. You have two minutes.
Good evening. It's Jackie Romero. I've been a Milpitas High School student. My kids have been there, my grandsons are. Social-emotional learning is, I agree, is the most important right now, but also communication. I see that there is a breakdown in how children or our youth can communicate. So I think that is great, that the social-emotional learning is part of this program, but also moving forward past summer school, how are we going to integrate that into the classrooms? On a side note, I just got an email from Mr. Rojas saying that the summer, I'm sorry, the spring 2022 swimming program never launched, and I'm very disappointed that the accountability to the PE department did not occur. And I just want to bring that forward right now, since we're talking about the high school, and I figured it's a great way to just push that in there, since I just got the email.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. We are discussing the summer programs, so we need to focus on the topic. So do you have comments regarding the topic we're discussing? I think we lost her. Are there any other?
Did you guys cut me, did you cut me off? Let me finish President Kelly up. As I was stating, that this has to do with the summer school, because since the email says it's not till fall of 2022, I'm asking for the accountability, then maybe you can push it up for the summer school of 2022, since, again, it was promised that these, that our youth would have the opportunity to take the swimming that is required by law in the state of California. So again, accountability is what I'm asking for, for something that the board had stated that was going to happen last year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have other public comments at this time? We have one more, and it's in person by Principal Rojas. This is the public comment regarding the summer program. Okay.
Yes, good evening, Board. I'm the next report, but I did want to make a public comment regarding our summer program. I do want to thank Preeti, Marissa, and Raquel for, you know, this idea about summer school credit recovery has been something Raquel and I have talked about for the last three to four years. How do we shift from the in-person seat time, learning everything over again in summer school, to providing students who did sit through school during fall or spring semester, maybe just didn't do so well on tests, and just needed a little push or another chance? And with the structure that they just presented tonight, that's going to happen for all of the courses at MHS, the combination with Edge Annuity and the mentoring that was brought up. So I do want to thank, I know, Raquel, you remember us having that conversation when you first took on interventions. This is a hard thing to do in high schools, because we're very stuck in equal time, equal credits. But this is really about mastery and trusting that what, what was taught during fall and spring, something stuck. And it's not a do-over. It's about how do we acknowledge what stuck, and how do we fill in those gaps? And that's really what ELO is about. So I want to thank this team for putting that together, because this is the first time we're actually going to run it with fidelity, and I think we'll get some great data from it. So I did want to make that public comment to thank the team. Thank you.
Thank you for that additional information.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any more public comments at this time, so board members, if you have questions or comments regarding the reports, let us hear it. Because I have some questions, too. When, when are the dates of the programs for, for these individual programs?
June 13th to July 21st.
Yes.
16th to the July?
June 13th.
June 13th, July 21st, no school on June 20th, and no school on July 4th.
Pre-K is June 6th through August 5th. And actually, ESY for high school does go one additional day to July 25th.
Okay. And then your, you know, your second to the last slide, it says 2,000, approximately 2,000 students to be served. So I'm assuming, is this like a first-come-first basis, or?
Not for K to eight. K to eight, it's really by invitation. We've really focused on our C-Says and inspirational students first, and then our unduplicated students. And then it'll be opened up, if there's still space. For high school, all of the high school programs, except for Bridge, are application-based. So we are going to try and accommodate all of the students who need to recover credits or need the A to G courses if they're an English learner. The, the Math Jam and the San Jose State University Tech Nest, they're not run by us, so there are some limitations there, but it's also application-based. I think Math Jam, there's about 200 seats, and the Tech Nest program, there's 90 seats.
Director Quaid, is that Tech Nest or Tech Excellence?
Tech Excellence.
Tech Excellence.
Tech Nest is San Jose City College, Tech Excellence is San Jose State.
Well, they're working together.
They're overlapping.
He's on the board for both, so. And then, you know, I had a special needs parent who came to me, was asking, you know, how soon do these summer programs are put in place? Because the city of San Jose, they already have their programs out, and just in case her daughter doesn't get into the program, I mean, they want to have her be enrolled in some kind of a program, right? And they might be too late?
So the ESY program for if you are eligible is already on your IEP, and it should indicate on the IEP under the extended school year or ESY what those services will be. Stacy Lillard and Serbie Baines have been putting those programs together, and I think Stacy's on the call if she wants to be more specific about it. But a parent should know whether their child is eligible or not, based on the IEP that's been written.
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
I think those are all my questions. Do you have other questions? Okay. Yep. And our virtual trustees, do you have any questions or comments? I don't see any, thank you very much, Director.
Thank you for, yes, thank you for the presentation. I do not have any questions. I think it's a great program for the students to continue, and especially those who need the credit to graduate and who is behind on these subjects. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for those, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just going to echo trustee Leanne, thank you for the great presentation. I think there's a lot of potential for these programs. No further questions.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, for our next LND report, I would like to invite in-person Principal Rojas and Assistant Principal Drager. We also have joining them online two MHS teachers, Tonichi and Audrey, and then also here or online are middle-school reps, I believe, Principal McMurray and a teacher from his school. What we'll be presenting on here is an ethnic studies update, an update on the pilot. And I have to say, this is one, some of the classes that I have had the most joy visiting this year. There's exceptional work happening here when we talk about personalized learning, authentic, relevant, and skill-building, like research skills and persuasive opinion writing as well, coming together that's happening in these classes. So I also have board packets that will show you sample student work, but they will first provide an overview of what's been happening this year at MHS.
Okay, good evening, good evening again, everyone. Francis Rojas, Principal in Milpitas High School, and Assistant Principal Skylar Drager here tonight. And as Executive Director Johari shared, we also have some teachers, Tonichi Lorenz and Audrey Yang, who taught the classes this year. So as you know, two years ago, we began our voyage in designing two ethnic studies courses way before even the governor signed into law AB 101. And we did that work together with Facing History in Ourselves, a group of our teachers who really looked into what would it take for us to design courses in addition to our Facing History in Ourselves course. And so this year, we piloted two courses, semester-long courses, each for one period. We had 58 students take the ethnic studies one class, and 40 students take the ethnic studies literature class. And so our presentation today, our teachers will share with us the highlights of their courses, and some of the next steps for each of their courses. We'll share a quick video with you about some student testimonials about their experience. And then Assistant Principal Drager will also talk about what are our next steps moving forward around ethnic studies at Milpitas High School and in our district. Okay? So I'd like to hand it over to Tonichi and Audrey, and next slide.
All right. Hi, thank you, Principal Rojas, for the introduction. My name is Audrey Yang. I am an ethnic studies teacher at Milpitas High School. And this year, from year one, some of the highlights include students explored different facets of their identities, differentiating between group and social and personal identities. Students also identified, researched, and taught their peers about systems of oppression and power within our current society. Students then analyzed and dis- Students then analyzed and discussed ways in which stereotypes are perpetuated and/or challenged through representations in media. So we had a sort of mini film unit where they analyzed different ways that tropes showed up and whether those challenged or perpetuated stereotypes in our society. And above all, students also took pride in understanding the histories of their and their peers' social identities.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tonichi Lorenzana, and I also teach ethnic studies and English at the high school. And this year, in our ethnic studies literature class, students read and analyzed a variety of texts and watched various media that were created by and for different groups of people of color in America. This year in particular, they read stories by and about African-American students, multi-ethnic students, Asian-American and Mexican-American and indigenous peoples. Students did a lot of research on different topics within each group and discussed specific topics, including identity. We discussed the idea of the American dream, and we looked at immigration laws and policies. And lastly, we looked at activism in the modern world. And the goal, and really the biggest kind of thing for this, was to have students develop empathy and understanding for a variety of cultures and experiences in America.
Next slide, please.
All right, and some opportunities as we look forward in our upcoming year. For ethnic studies, one, vertical alignment with other ethnic study courses, including Tonichi's multicultural literature course, Facing History in Ourselves courses that we already have on campus. I'd also like to establish cross-curricular opportunities for collaboration. Like we were talking about earlier in the board meeting, right, there's instances in which we can find connection between math courses, between English courses, history courses. I'm thinking AP Environmental Studies is another big one. And then also campus and community-based summative action plan project. Currently, our action plan is students identify the tools that they have to go out and challenge the issues that they see in our society. And I'd really like to cement that and make it more applicable and real-life experience by having students draft up an actual action plan that they can implement in our community.
I'd also like to echo Audrey's sentiment. I think it would be wonderful to have a little more alignment with her course and the other courses we currently offer at MHS. My course is largely based on literature, and I try to be very responsive to the makeup of the students in the class to try and find stories that represent our community. And so I think it would be wonderful to have more opportunity to find additional books, short stories and things to represent various underrepresented groups within the literary canon. And for my class, the final project that the students work on is actually the creation of a children's book focusing on topics that we have covered in class to try and make things accessible, things about identity, immigration, family. And so it would be a really wonderful opportunity to kind of connect with students at various schools in the district to kind of show and make it, as Audrey put it, kind of a real-life action plan for this class, and so they have some kind of tangible results with it.
Thank you, Tonichi and Audrey. And I think now we're going to share our video student experience. Scott is sharing it. Here we go.
While taking that class, ethnic studies, I learned about the four eyes of oppression. Because we already know that oppression is a big part of society, and we want to combat it. And by acknowledging oppression, we can dismantle it and actually take care of the issue itself. So that's one key takeaway when I took ethnic studies.
Key takeaway for me is learning about the model minority myth and how it originated starting in America, relating to how Asians are the better minority and how people often use it to compare to other minorities and kind of like stoop down. And it connected to me because being Asian and a lot of my peers as well, we've all kind of felt the pressure that comes with being the model minority.
In ethnic studies, you learn about stuff that you don't typically learn in other classes. Like in this class, you learn about the gender binary or how like gender is a social construct. And like, unlike other classes, you see that other classes are like Eurocentric. On this one, you learn from like POC figures.
Um, I took this class because I wanted more, I wanted to learn more about like ethnic minorities and like other marginalized groups. I want to see like their point of view as well as like understanding my my ethnic backgrounds and what oppressions and like challenges they went through in history. So I was really passionate and wanted to learn more about that. So that's why I took this course, and I encourage others who are also passionate about this and want to learn more and be open-minded about other minority groups to take this course.
Take ethnic studies!
Okay, and next, Assistant Principal Skylar Drager will speak about our next steps, especially the work we'll be doing this following school year.
So we're continuing, I'm shorter than you are. We're continuing our work with Facing History in Ourselves. So last year, what we did was met several times over the course of the year in order to create these classes. So there was a committee that worked on that. This year was the piloting of the classes, and now we've kind of come to the point where we have three very distinct ethnic studies courses on campus. So Facing History in Ourselves, which has been in existence for about 27 years. The Ethnic Studies One and the Ethnic Studies Literature, and they're very distinct courses, but of course, there are intersections. And so what the teachers who are running these courses would like to do next year is meet and talk about that. Where do we align? Is there a progression or a pathway to be had? If we're, Ethnic Studies One is targeting predominantly freshmen. It is open to everybody, but it was created at its intent to be a freshman introductory-level course. And then Facing History was created to be an upper-class course, as was the Ethnic Studies Literature. And so a student could technically do a pathway. We would like to meet with the middle school and possibly even the elementary schools to also say, is there any even longer articulation? They have their own Facing History course and have been talking about other ethnic studies classes as well. And that brings us to the law AB 101 that is coming in. I don't remember the official start date for that law, but it requires that students graduating from California take an ethnic studies course. And so what we would like to do is continue to talk about which classes on our campus already meet that requirement. And it requires us to go and look at our MHS graduation requirements. It's been a long time in coming for that. And so that will be a large endeavor with a committee that will involve the community as well as MHS. But this is a starting point and one of the topics that we would focus on with that committee.
Thank you, Skylar, and thank you for being involved with that, knowing that you've been involved with the master calendar for a very long time at the high school, that you're very well-versed in a lot of different things in that area. And are you going to be a part of that committee?
Absolutely. I was, I believe, the second Facing History teacher on campus at Milpitas High. So, you know, my, at least with this course, it goes way back, but absolutely.
Yeah, and Facing History, one of the founders or one of the early employees was a Milpitas High School teacher, Jack Weinstein. So yeah, I'm very familiar with that program as well, so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. At this time, do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none? Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for sharing the pieces of what the students are learning. It's interesting coming out of the pandemic and a lot of things that are happening in our society where students had a lot of questions and still finding their own identity. So I really appreciate the fact that, you know, Tonichi and Audrey were talking about, how do you identify yourself? And I think that the piece that was great was putting that in a children's book, but I would kind of extend that to saying, you know, now that you've gone through and learned about yourself, what would you tell your former self as a child? And how do you explain that? And gives them the pathway to really help us bridge, you know, the learning in the elementary and middle school levels. So thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, thank you for mentioning the pathway to the middle school. I understand that the middle school programs, the middle schools do have some programs on ethnic studies, and you guys are working to align them in some way?
We have been working separately for the most part, and we would like to bring it together.
Okay.
I do want to mention that in the process of designing the courses last year, we did speak with Principal Sean Anglin of Russell Middle School. We did have a conversation about what we were going to cover at the high school, and he says, oh, okay, we're going to cover this at the middle school. So we do know that there isn't too much overlap because we did have that conversation.
I also appreciate your desire to stretch down to elementary because we do also need to support ethnic studies as an integration into what students learn beginning in preschool by way of making sure that they see themselves in books and stories and in math and science. And so as we move forward, that is something to put into the planning for culturally responsive teaching.
I'd like to make one last note, too. We are still partnering with Facing History in Ourselves as an organization, so they're going to continue on that journey with us.
Oh, good.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you for giving us, you know, sort of these slides to see what goes on in the classroom and what they're studying. It's very nice. Thank you very much.
Oh, one thing I'd like to point out on one of those slides is I noticed it's a posting of culture. We.
Yeah, thanks, Tonichi and Audrey, for being here and sharing your perspective and providing this hands-on stuff. We like to see this stuff what students are doing and how they're applying it. So thank you very much for that as well.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to item seventeen, action items. A, Business Services, Accept the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee Annual Report, Assistant Superintendent Business Services.
Yes, good evening again. And in June 2014, the Milpitas voters approved a renewal of our parcel tax, Measure C, and for $84 per parcel. And that parcel tax will expire on June 30th, 2023. And just in early March, our board also authorized and placed a ballot in this coming June election as Measure E to renew our current parcel tax. And the parcel tax brings in about 1.6 million revenue to our district general fund to support our programs. And so tonight, as a part of the compliance for the parcel tax, we have a parcel tax oversight committee. It consists of five residents and from the city of Milpitas. We have Nick Connors is our current chair of the committee. We have Rafina Morano. She's the vice chair. And we also have Angie Yuan and William Lam and Tom Verlory as our committee members. So tonight, our chair, Nick, will share the annual report with the board as a part of a compliance for this parcel tax oversight committee to make sure that our spending is in compliance with what we committed to the voters back then. So Nick, I would like to invite you and to share the parcel tax oversight committee annual report to our board then. I can share my screen so I can present this written report to you as well.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you, Wendy. Did you just want me to read this?
I mean, you can just maybe highlight this report, then. What I'm going to do, I'm going to to share my screen so I can share this written report. So maybe you don't need to read all the report, maybe just go over some of the highlights then. Especially what is the committee's finding or what is the committee after we did our annual meeting, what the committee find out from base, like from our staff's report?
Sure. Well, first, I would just like to really thank Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zhang. She does a great job at each of our meetings in explaining all the numbers and how they roll up into the district's overall budget. So thank you very much to her. The parcel tax, as Wendy mentioned, is about 1.5 million per year and is a crucial piece in the budgets, in the district's overall budget. And so we're very, the committee is pleased to support that program, and we're glad to see that the district is using the funds for good use.
Okay, thank you, Nick. And also, just for the record, in our agenda, we attached a summary of our last year, 2021 actual parcel tax expenditure summary along with the 2122 current year parcel tax expenditure projection. And since this is an action item, so we would like to ask the board to accept now parcel tax oversight committee annual report tonight.
Move to accept the parcel tax.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept in a second. Scott, roll call. Vote, please.
We do have a hand raised.
Oh, okay.
Okay. JR, we're going to take you, okay, your audio is enabled, and go right ahead.
Thank you for the time. I'm just wondering, this is very general on this report. Could you tell me how much of the funds for the, let's say, English program that's designated for Milpitas High and Calhills, what percentage goes to Milpitas High and what percentage goes to Calhills?
Yes, I'll be more happy to provide that information for you. And let me pull out, because at each meeting, we will share the detailed expenditure report with our committee member. And also, the parcel tax oversight committee meeting is also open to the public, so you're also welcome to attend for our next meeting.
Awesome. Is that put on the website or is that something I can be added to an email list for?
Well, now you mentioned to me, I'll make sure we invite you particularly the next time. But it, my understanding, we publish the agenda on a district website, and so and in the past, we have, we did a virtual meeting, so you can join us virtually.
Assistant Superintendent Zedan, could you share the attachment that's in the agenda on the screen?
Sure.
And thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. Is there a way to get this tonight or is that something you can send me?
Yes, I can. If you can leave me your email address, I cannot share my screen right now.
Okay, that's.
Scott has control of it. Scott, when you have a second, could you share the attachment that's in the agenda?
Okay, David, now I can share because it's under public hearing. Okay, so this is just a summary for the, along with our annual report. And for high school, so we have Milpitas High School and a Calhoun High School. And then this is the expenditure allocation for the engineering program. Basically, we're just covering the engineering teacher salary and the benefit proportionally. And I'm not so sure if, how detailed information you are looking for. Yeah.
Thank you for that, Assistant Superintendent John. I think it's pretty clear how much of the parcel tax is going to the high school as far as the. Thank you for that, Assistant Superintendent John. I, I think it's pretty clear how much, um, of the parcel tax is going to the, to the high school as far as the English program there.
Yes, and we also shared the detail, the, the staffing and the, but for this purpose, we just attach the summary.
Yes, thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Zane. Do we have other public comments? Are there any further questions or comments from board members?
None from me.
Um, the, um, the parcel tax, um, has out, has been a continuous investment by the, um, Milpitas community ongoing since, I believe, two thousand and ten. And it is allowed for our STEM programs, um, at our elementary, middle, and as you can see from this expenditure, expenditure at our high schools as well. Um, so we feel that it's a vital part of our success in terms of how we support our community and ensure that our learners are ready to be, um, to, to pursue the careers and opportunities that present themselves, um, in the Bay Area for an opportunity to live here as well. So, uh, we thank the Milpitas residents and those that support, um, the parcel tax, which is an investment in our teachers and our STEM programs, uh, a tremendous amount. Thank you.
And I will say from just a quick glance, I, I thank you for the balanced spending amongst all our grade levels from K to twelve, um, as we are a K to twelve district.
Yes, thank you very much for, um, this attachment. It shows the breakdown, um, you know, elementary school, middle school, uh, the high school with, uh, and Cal Hills. It is very important program in, uh, our school district. And as, uh, you know, Vice President Chris Norwood said, it's, uh, been supporting this program since, what, two thousand and ten? So yes, thank you very much. If there's no further questions or comments, we have a, uh, motion on the table in a second.
Yep.
So it's vote time?
So it's a roll call vote, Scott?
Okay, board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Yu.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And now we are on to item B, Superintendent's Office, uh, Adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty-two Point Four-One, Recognizing May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month.
Thank you, President Yip Chuan. For this year's resolution, our, uh, speech and debate winner Natalie Chen and her brother Ashton Chen, uh, revised and recorded this one.
Resolution Twenty Twenty-two Forty-One, Recognizing May as National Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas Asian Pacific encompasses all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands of Melanesia, Micronesia, and Polynesia. And whereas in June nineteen seventy-seven, Representatives Norman Y. Mineta of California and Frank Horton of New York introduced a United States House of Representatives Resolution to proclaim the first ten days of May as Asian Pacific Heritage Week. And whereas the following month, a similar bill was introduced in the Senate by Daniel Anoye and Spark Matsonaga from Hawaii. Both were passed and on October fifth, nineteen seventy-eight, President Jimmy Carter signed a joint resolution designating the annual celebration. And whereas in nineteen ninety, President George H. W. Bush signed a bill passed by Congress to extend the week-long celebration into a month-long celebration. In nineteen ninety-two, the official designation of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month was signed into law. And whereas in two thousand and nine, President Barack Obama in the annual presidential proclamation designating May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month noted the hardships that Asian Pacific Americans, including unjust working conditions, discrimination, racial prejudice, exclusion from U.S. citizenship and immigration and internment. President Obama also noted the contribution that Asian Pacific Americans have made throughout America's history, particularly in the field of railroad development, fair labor practices, agriculture, art, literature, science, and technology.
Whereas countless Asian slash Pacific Islanders who have made their marks in various fields such as labor organizer Larry Itliang, civil rights activist Yuri Kouchiyama, author Amy Tam, martial artist slash actor Bruce Lee, journalist Connie Chung, politician Dilip Singh Sandh, war hero-turned-politician Daniel Inouye, Presidential Medal of Freedom recipient Gordon Hirabayashi, Super Bowl champion Heinz Ward, MLB great Ichiro Suzuki, Freedom House founder Jada Im, aeronautical engineer Kalp Nachala, Olympic medalist Michelle Kwan, District Court Judge Sri Srinivasan, astronaut Sanita Williams, and designer Vera Wang. And whereas, also in two thousand and nine, President Barack Obama called on all Americans to educate themselves and others to learn about the history, including the discrimination and hardships Asian Pacific Americans have faced and the contributions made to American society through appropriate programs and activities. Whereas May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May seventh, eighteen forty-three and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the transcontinental railroad on May tenth, eighteen sixty-nine. The majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the Milpitas Unified School District joins other communities and school districts in our nation in celebrating May as National Asian slash Pacific American Heritage Month, passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on May tenth, twenty twenty-two by the following vote.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Seeing none? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Scott, roll call, vote please.
Board member Si.
Aye.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Yu.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're moving on to, uh, number three, establish board, no, is that right? Oh, sorry. Adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty-two Point Four-Two, Recognizing Teachers for Their Invaluable Contributions to Learners, Superintendent's Office.
Thank you. For this resolution, which honors all of our certificated staff who are in and supporting the classrooms, we invited our Milpitas Middle College High School Board Rep Mira Bhakta to work alongside Principal Clarissa Scott and the rest of the Milpitas Unified School District Middle College High School student body to create and recite this resolution in honor of our teachers.
Whereas teachers, including international specialists, demonstrate and share their love of learning in the classroom every day and act as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. And by doing so, are partners with parents and the community in inspiring students' dreams and laying down a foundation for them to be good citizens and.
Whereas the success of more than ten thousand students in Milpitas public schools relies on the skills, knowledge, encouragement, and attitudes of dedicated teachers and.
Whereas teachers work collaboratively with the Board of Education Superintendent colleagues, parents, caregivers, and others in support of our commitment to quality education for all learners and.
Teachers were above and beyond to, to continue the education of students through this global pandemic, modifying the instruction to accommodate for a hundred percent distance learning and then pivoting to provide in-person support and instruction through MUSD Educate Everywhere learners and.
Whereas, um, Milpitas Unified School District teachers in particular educate and motivate students who have special needs that require, uh, unique skills or students who face obstacles in other educational settings and.
Whereas MUSD teachers have made a crucial difference in the lives of students and are true champions for children, schools, and community and.
Whereas the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education recognizes that the quality of all students' educational experiences depends significantly and vitally upon the quality of their teachers. And because of the influence of good, of a good teacher continues long after school days are only memories and.
Whereas the board recognizes MUSD teachers for their hard work in our schools and communities. California Education Code Three Seven Two 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 designates the second Wednesday in May as the day of the teacher, May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And National Teacher Appreciation Week is celebrated during the first full week of May, May second to May sixth this year.
Now therefore be it resolved that the MUSD Board of Education acknowledges the contributions of all teachers and moreover urges parents, caregivers, students, and the community to express their appreciation for teachers and their contributions publicly that improve our daily lives and our community in future.
Thank you very much for that. Um, do we have public comments? We do. Okay.
Okay, we do have one hand raised. JR, we are enabling your audio. Please take yourself off mute and you will have two minutes. Go right ahead.
I just want to take this moment and also thank all the great teachers out there that do go above and beyond for our students. Um, unfortunately, we do have some teachers that are not doing that, but we do have majority of the teachers at MUSD that my children have experienced, that have had the benefit of a teacher that has been gone, that has, that has gone above and beyond. So, um, yes, we should definitely, um, give them some acknowledgement and this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Do we have other, uh, public comments? None? Okay.
Motion to, um, adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty-two dot forty-two, Recognizing Teachers for Their Invaluable Contributions to Learners.
And I second the motion.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to, um, adopt the resolution. Um, roll Scott, roll, roll call, Scott?
Board member Si.
Aye.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Yu.
Aye.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
And Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to, uh, item three, Establish Board Scholarship for Graduating Seniors, Superintendent's Office.
Thank you. Annually at this time since twenty fourteen, when the board, uh, first discussed having a board scholarship at that time in honor of trustee Danny Lau. I, uh, put this on the agenda as, um, posing the question, shall the board establish a Milpitas Unified School District Board Scholarship for Graduating Seniors in perpetuity? And if established, this shall be a regular agenda item for board discussion at the second March board meeting for each board member to make a pledge to fund the scholarship. So it's a discussion and action item.
Okay, um, I believe we have, uh, public comment? I have a, a green card here from Guan Alisantosa. He said he's, uh, joining online. I'm.
Hello?
Okay, yeah, go right ahead, Guan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, you can, um, hold on, let me, let me exit from full screen, so, okay. Hi, yeah, good evening. Uh, actually, uh, that was in two thousand and sixteen, okay? Five of our board members working together initiated school board scholarship. Perhaps we did not make it clear or we did not do it right, but the original intent was to establish permanent board scholarship with donation from each board members. We donated two hundred dollar per person, raising one thousand dollar. We know it wouldn't pay for UC Berkeley, UCLA, nor any other top universities. But for some students, it would be the seed money to go to community college as a stepping stone to four-year college or take certificate training to allow them to start working after that. We know we cannot force anyone to donate. It must come from our hearts, but we did it. So if any of you today unable to donate or blatantly refuse to contribute, then indeed, you let some deserving student down by shortchanging the contribution pool. I urge you to support this. It can change lives in a positive direction. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, do we have another public comment? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I guess we do. JR, you are up.
Thank you for the time. Yeah, I'm, I just listened to the last public comment and I seem, um, didn't know that this was even a thing. But I don't think that is appropriate for the school board to pick one winner for a scholarship when there are so, so many kids that are deserving of the scholarship. Um, this really, you know, can't be very fair to all the other kids that, um, are deserving. So I, I don't think this is a great idea, actually. Thank you.
Okay, um, are there any other public comments?
That was the last, uh, virtual hand raised.
Okay, um.
Motion to approve, um, establishing the board scholarship for graduating seniors.
Um, I do have, sorry, are we having discussion or going straight to the motion?
We're gonna go have the discussion after we, uh, follow the pro, the, the rules for, um, uh, having a motion and a second, then we'll have a discussion afterwards.
So I'll second, uh, Vice President's word.
Okay, we have a motion and now we have a second. Now we're open for discussion. Board member Si.
Okay, um, well, if there's no other comments from other board members, I just do want to state for the record that I did speak with, uh, some of the board members who were on the school board in twenty sixteen uh, about the genesis intentions and directions of this. And was, say for the record that I do believe charitable activities should, um, be private rather than, um, advertised, especially, um, during election season. I will continue to maintain my own charitable giving in a private manner and not for, um, public attention or, uh, whatever this is. I think there are certain philosophies that do actually speak to this and I think, uh, those are worth paying attention to. Um, there are many, many deserving students out there. And I think we all contribute to them in the way that we see fit. Those are my comments.
So just from my understanding, again, uh, you know, being the newer school board member here, uh, we fund the, the scholarship and it goes to the high school and, and what in the high school determines the criteria of awarding it to the, the student. Is that my understanding of this?
Yes, so depending on the amount of funds that the board raises towards the scholarship, the, uh, that determines the number of scholarships and, uh, I think it's been five hundred or seven hundred and fifty in the past. And so, uh, for example, if the board raised fifteen hundred dollars, that could be three five hundred dollar scholarships or two seven hundred and fifty dollar scholarships. And one would be distributed by Milpitas High School, the other by Cal Hills High School. And then once, um, the middle college high school has a graduating class, then that would be the third.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Just so clarification is that the board raises money and, uh, there's a process in place to select the students just like any other, um, scholarships, right? Out there, it's not, you know, um, one deserving student or what, there's a process in place and the student applies for it. And just like any other scholarship, they get selected, um, by their criterias. So this is, um, for the board, it's called the board scholarship. So board members, um, can contribute and, um, in the past, we also have other members, community members, if they want to, they can also contribute so that we can, you know, um, uh, give more scholarships to these students. Okay?
And also staff, staff also contribute.
And yes, staffs also contribute. So any, any members, um, can contribute because, you know, it's for our students. We want them to succeed. We want them to do well and this helps, every little bit helps. And this helps, every little bit helps, whether it's a couple hundred, whether it's 500 or 700. So it's based on how much we can raise is what we can do to help our own students. Okay, so we have a, any other comments?
Yeah, I was also on the Board when the scholarship was created by the Board. And each Board is different in the way that they approach giving to the community. It has been mentioned by the Board and others that graduation time, that transition, that opportunity to go on to the next level. I'm sure if we had Principal Stice here, he would be able to share the tremendous impact that the Board Scholarship has had on their students in terms of them getting a chance to go to community college or to enroll in vocational school and a number of other things. So I, and I remember the spirit of the idea and it was out of a giving spirit with the fact that we were not in control of the who the recipient was, but we left that to the agencies that are responsible, just like they do with any other scholarships or funds that they receive. So I want to make sure that that has also been clearly stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote. Scott?
Okay, board member Si.
Hold on. So wait a minute, let's confirm. We are confirming that we're going to establish a Board Scholarship for Graduating Seniors. And if established, this is a regular agenda item for the Board Discussion at the 2nd March Board Meeting for each Board Member to either make a pledge. It should be to either make a pledge. No, wait a minute. So here's a language issue here. For each Board Member to make a pledge to fund the scholarship. And I heard Board Member Si say that something about he will continue to support students in his own way. So does this language constitute that everyone has to make a statement? Or whether or not they're going to pledge or not? Or each individual Board Member can make a pledge at their leisure?
I would say probably closest to the last thing you said. Again, this is in line with the philosophy that charity should be done generally as a private matter. If you want to, you know, make it an official thing, that's up to you. But I maintain that charitable giving is generally a private matter.
Well, it says to pledge, pledge to fund the scholarship. So that would be the Board Scholarship. And pledging to fund it could be interpreted as pledging to contribute to it, raise funding for it, support it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. And Scott?
We do have a hand raised if you wanted me to go to that for your vote.
Okay.
Okay, Robert Jung has a hand raised. Robert, we've enabled your audio. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Hey, just as a reminder, while we have noted the high schools' graduation, I do want to remind folks that as a supporter for adult education, we do have graduates in our adult education program. And you might want to consider that or not. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're back to roll call vote, right?
Okay, roll call, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Abstain.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Newell.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes for, oh, with an abstention.
Okay, since this is passed, I mean, do we?
The language says 2nd March Board Meeting to make a pledge. Unless we want to do it now.
So we do have the opportunity. If we want to keep to the agenda, there is an opportunity when we do the announcement. We have final announcements at the Board before the next Board Meeting. Or are we looking at, I'm not quite sure what we could do at this point.
You could, in the spirit of the scholarship fund, you could discuss or pledge funding a scholarship for this year at this point. Or you could, as you pointed out, do it at the announcements. And the reason why it's there for the 2nd March Board Meeting is because the high school administrators usually ask around April, beginning of May, because they want to be able to put the applications out there for the kids to apply.
Okay.
Okay, I am going to contribute $200 for this Board Scholarship.
$200 for me.
I'll do the same.
I as well.
Thank you very much.
I will too.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other executive members would like to contribute?
Yes, I'll be more happy to contribute too.
Thank you very much. Is Guan still online?
The two.
Can you hear me?
No.
Go ahead, Guan.
Yeah, I can do 200.
Thank you. David, are you taking notes of who's? And then I think that we're, in the past, that we kept it open so that other community members can also contribute because they're unable to attend the meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. And we will let other members know. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. The students will be very happy, you know, that we're supporting their education. Staff members, thank you very much. And I know our principals will be very happy to have this Board Scholarship this year for their students. Okay, so we're moving on to item four. Determine if Board Member absences meet criteria for compensation under Board by Law.
So just a reminder, for the first Board Meeting following the last month, we will do a look back if there are any Board Members who missed a meeting. Then it's on the agenda for that purpose for the Board to determine if they will excuse the absence based on the criteria outlined in Board by Law 9250. Scott, did we have any Board Members who were absent for a Board Meeting in April?
Yes, we did have a special Board Meeting and there was an absence. Let me just get to the agenda item, please. Yes, Board Member Si was absent from the April 19th Special Board Meeting.
Board Member Ty, do you have comments about that or?
Yes, so when I was making my calendar for the month of April, earlier it was announced that there was only one regular Board Meeting for April. So I did book that day for a lot of my work activities because I do work during the week. When the Special Board Meeting was announced later in April, I was already booked for work and that quorum of other Board Members was already available. So the quorum was already available. And I did respond. I was able to kind of finish my work later and I tried to log on, but it looked like, I'm not sure if I was able to get into the meeting or the meeting was already over at that point. But yes, in short, I was working.
Okay, I was not notified, just to let you know. And I have requested if Board Members are unable to attend a meeting, to notify me to, you know, so that I know who's attending the meetings. And I don't think I got any communications that you were attending or not.
I do recall sending out an email. I'm not sure what happened on your end if you didn't get anything, but I did send out an email. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments?
There's a public comment.
Public comments?
Yes, we have one hand raised. JR, you're going to enable your audio. You will have two minutes to speak. Go right ahead.
I apologize. I'm Scott. I did send you an email just a second ago. I actually had a comment for the discussion about the scholarship.
I'm sorry, there's one comment per individual, per item and.
That was a new item. That was the actual contribution. I actually wanted to contribute since Vice President Norwood did have the opportunity to explain it a little bit better. I thought it was the Board that was actually making the decision, not the school. And therefore I did have a change of heart. So thank you, Vice President Norwood. And so my school, Quick Learning School, will donate towards the scholarship fund. We'll donate, we'll match the 200.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, were there any other public comments? Okay.
So no other comments. I move to approve the absence.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we're open up for discussion. You know, Board Member Ty, I've seen you all over the Bay Area. You're at kickoff parties, you know, campaign kickoff parties, at my neighbor's birthday party, fundraising events, parades, and other social gatherings. I have a hard time to excuse this type of absent. You know, it was an evening meeting. It wasn't a, like an afternoon or in the middle of the day. And, you know, you're elected to attend, you know, school meetings and events. You're elected to, you know, serve, being present. And I just haven't seen that from you. For me, it's hard to excuse this absence. So that's my comment.
If there's no other comment, I'm just gonna respond to that briefly. Yes, I do go to other activities. I don't believe that this precludes me from working during the weekday. I think a lot of people serving on school boards do work during the week, especially for a special meeting that, you know, was called outside of the regular schedule. I make my best effort. And, you know, I'm here for the regular meetings, so I don't believe your comments really have any bearing. And frankly, it's up to the voters to decide who is doing a good job and who is serving for the right reasons. So I do take exception to that sort of judgment. Thank you.
I've seen, you know, people make comments that you're even at somebody you hardly know's dad's funeral. So I'm just putting it out there, the reason why I'm going to vote this as I know. So I know we have a motion on the table and a second. And if we don't have any other comments, we will go for a roll call vote.
No other comments.
Okay, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Aye.
Board member Leanne.
No.
Board clerk Newell.
No.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
No.
Measure fails.
I want to say, and I find it disrespectful to, for whoever.
Thank you very much, though the vote has already been in place. And now we are moving on to consent items.
For those negative comments about my Mr. Brown. Yes, I was at his funeral and he was a good man. So I take exception.
Okay, we're moving on to item 18, Consent Items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the Board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the Board, staff, or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for a discussion or correction. Are there any items?
Board President Yip Chuan, we do have a late hand raised. I was at the end of the last discussion after the vote. And it's the same.
Yeah, and you know, Scott, we're gonna try to follow protocol because it was after the vote.
Okay. Proceed.
I'm gonna, you know, try to be considerate of our staff members here. They have long drives and we have, we start our meeting at 5:00 PM. So we're on item 18.
Motion to approve the consent items.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussions? Okay, if not, let's go for a roll call vote.
Board member Si.
Aye.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Newell.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 19, Dates of Future Board Meetings. May 24th, tentative study session at 5:00 PM, tentative closed session at 6:00 PM, open session seven, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and Boardroom. June 14th, tentative study session at 5:00 PM, tentative closed session 6:00 PM, open session at 7:00, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and Randall Elementary World Language School. June 28th, tentative study session 5:00 PM, tentative closed session at 6:00 PM, open session 7:00 PM, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and Randall Elementary World Languages School, 1300 Edsel Drive. Okay, item number 20, Announcements, Reminders. Executive Team Members, are there any?
Quick question. Why, why are the June meetings at Randall?
That would have been my announcement, just to remind everybody that June forward, we are at the Randall World Languages School for our Board Meetings.
And it was also in the reports as well that.
Phase one of our construction here is gonna start.
Of the Innovation Campus. And it was announced a couple times.
Okay, good.
Okay, announcements, reminders? None? Okay, how about Board Members?
There is a need. If there are any teachers that are listening and they're available or any folks that are registered to volunteer with the school district, grad night does need volunteers and please reach out to the high school to determine if you're able to volunteer. I just wanted to put out that reminder and that the Russell Track. I just wanted to put out that reminder and that the Russell track and the Rancho track are being used by the campuses. We have, when are our events?
The track ribbon cutting is May. May?
31st.
Thank you. And then the groundbreaking for the Innovation Campus will be sometime around the first week of August.
And we have our celebration of multilingualism happening all throughout our district. Our English language learners, students, besides knowing their native language, they have found, they have, how would I say, they have proved, I don't, how do I say? How do we, how do I?
They have demonstrated that they are now fluent English proficient.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other announcements or reminders?
Yes, I do have some time for an announcement. I do see a hand raised for JR. I would like to give JR the chance to speak as they were not given that chance before, so.
Okay, this is some announcement, Mr. Si.
Yeah, I want to give my.
This is an announcement for board members.
And I would like to give my announcement time to the person.
Right, but that's not your fault, you're not following the protocols.
Sorry, no.
If there's no other announcements or reminders, then I'm gonna motion to adjourn the meetings. We started here before 5:00 o'clock, so it's been a long.
I do have an announcement.
Thank you.
So I want to thank the ones that come out to golf last weekend and to thank the students, the golfers that was there. And we do have pictures. You may want to contact us. We're more than happy to forward a copy of the picture for you. So thank you.
Thank you, board member Hanlan. So if there's no other adjourn, announcement, I'd like to motion that we adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.